Amendment, request of the City of North Liberty to amend the future land use map of twenty five point sixty four acres, more or less on property located on the east side of North Buke Street. Approximately one hundred and eighty-five feet south of Scales Bend from commercial and industrial to residential. Ryan?
So, in order to consider the next request, we need to fix the future land use map. As you mentioned, right now it's commercial and industrial. The next, the request for rezoning is to a residential zoning. So, we like to, when you guys vote or make your recommendation, to have the request is consistent with the future land use map. And so, generally speaking, the future land use map is consistent with zoning map. So, the area in red, which is commercial on the land use map, is zone C two A. And the area which is gray is industrial on the future land use map is zoned I one light industrial. I did some historical research, kind of figure out, kind of, because I've had questions about, you know, this industrial area west of Ranshaw Way, kind of seems to be a legacy industrial zoning. So, when I pulled the zoning map from nineteen ninety, this was the north end of town, and it really looked like this was going to be our industrial development for the city. Centro came in, its initial building, actually, here's the area all from nineteen ninety. You can kind of see Centro down there, is the initial phase of it. But really, none of this development to the north had really happened yet, really nothing, not much north of Penn. So, this area was zoned industrial. But much of the city has grown around it and really, really caused me to question, you know, is, is the industrial zoning and land use in this area entirely appropriate? Obviously, I have opinion about the current request, but I think as we go through the comprehensive plan amendment, we're going to be looking a little bit more closely on the land uses on the west side of Ranshaw Way. Really, contemporary industrial development is really closer to the interstate for easy access and things like that. We didn't receive any neighborhood input specific to this request, but we did have a good neighbor meeting with respect to, we actually had two of them with the rezoning. I didn't get a sense from anybody, except for one person that I talked to, that they were objection, objecting to the residential use of the property. There was an exception, I did. Surrounding area, obviously, we look at the residential developed Fox Run subdivision to the north and think residential would be a better fit here. And the residential land use in this location would achieve consistency with adopted comprehensive planned land use policies, and so, we do recommend you accept the two listed findings and forward the request to City Council with a recommendation for approval.
Okay.
And if there are folks here for the rezoning, we'd probably be more appropriate to, unless you have a question about the, the land use, but probably more appropriate to hear.
For the next item? Okay. So, then we go to public comment on this, the comprehensive plan, future land use amendment. Are there any public comments? If so, please step to the podium and introduce yourself. Okay, there are no public comments, then I open it up to the commission for questions and comments for Ryan or anyone.
I, just for the commission's sake, I can, as far as, so, the last comprehensive plan advisory committee meeting, the advisory committee was laying out future land uses in a lot of these areas, and as Ryan said, the focus on moving, you know, the idea of new industrial development being closer to three eighty or west of three eighty, this was an area that was specifically, we had, we were able to mark, you know, what we thought the appropriate land use was in spaces like this, and this was an area that was actually the advisory committee, and that, and I believe the consultants were in agreement that that, this use made, made sense there.
Residential?
Yeah, correct.
Instead of squeezing another commercial in that?
Yeah, and it's, and it seems to flow, I mean, you've got, you know, you're not far from the school, and it's, you know, there's other residential nearby, so, just for your reference.
Cool, thank you.
No comment, I think it, I think it makes sense.
Okay, if there are no further questions and comments from the committee, then I will open the floor for a motion, and I know Ryan has a suggested one if anyone wants to use it.
I can go. I move that the planning commission accept the two listed findings and forward the comprehensive plan amendment to the City Council with a recommendation for approval.
Okay, motion by Heisler.
I'll second it.
Second by Miller. Tracy, could we have a roll call vote? Heisler?
Aye.
Willer?
Aye.
Staber?
Aye.
Ahern?
Aye.
Vincent?
Aye.
Bafki?
Aye.
Okay, passed, then we go to agenda item four, public hearing on zoning map amendment.
Okay, so, this will be for the rezoning of the subject property. Again, here's the, I should say, here's the current zoning map against C two A and I one. The requested zoning is RS six, single unit residence on nineteen point seven three acres, and RM twelve PAD on five point nine one acres, and I'll describe the purpose for the PAD in a little bit. Again, land use is commercial industrial, but again, this board, just commission voted to recommend that it be changed to residential. Here is a concept plan for the rezoning, they haven't gotten into a lot of the engineering work, so this is just kind of a concept of how they would like property to lay out. Obviously, they're going to have to meet all of the city's requirements, but the areas that are circled in red would be the RM twelve PAD. And the purpose for the PAD is that we do not allow individual driveways accessing a garage to, to normally back out onto a public street. Normally, you see multifamily developments that are kind of what we call double loaded, they're on each side, they have a private street, and that private street goes out into a public street. I think of like Donovan Estates, that type of development across from the high school. We kind of felt in this case, it was a limited areas of the RM twelve, it doesn't really impact public streets that much, like Dubuque, if, but were a busy thoroughfare street, I think staff would have more of a concern, but that's really the only waiver they're asking for, and that's the purpose for the PAD request. We actually had two good neighbor meetings. The first one was on February fourteenth via Zoom, it was really well attended, I think we, outside of the applicant staff, probably had about twenty-five to thirty people attend. And I'll tell you, we call it the last piece of the puzzle fitting in, right? These are the hardest ones to, to, you know, work with, because kind of an established neighborhood's there, and you're fitting this last piece. So, people brought up a lot of, lot of good concerns. Admittedly, some of these concerns, we don't have worked out, because we haven't gone through the engineering yet, but, but we will, I've got a good neighborhood list, we're committed to kind of sharing that information as we move forward. So, we had that first meeting, there was a little bit of confusion at the first meeting, so, I would require a second neighborhood meeting on March twenty-second. We did that in person, and actually, we tested a hybrid of Zoom, so there was, wasn't a lot of people that attended online, we only had a couple people in person, but it worked out pretty well, some people, they were able to kind of type in, Josie, kind of like you had mentioned, typed in your questions, and we were able to relay those, so, maybe that's a model moving forward. I thought it worked pretty good. But I'm going to summarize some of the concerns that I heard, and answer them if I can. We did hear the concern about improving drainage along the south side of Fox Run subdivision, the applicant and staff recognizes that as an issue. The initial phase of Fox Run doesn't have stormwater detention, so some of it does drain, so they will have to capture that stormwater and, and bring it into their system. And we'll get more into that with construction plan approval. General questions about the design of the subdivision, according stormwater detention, again, I think this is an engineering detail that we're not quite there on. Concerns about the compatibility of the homes adjacent to Fox Run subdivision, would there be a visual buffer between the two developments? They weren't quite, they don't, aren't far enough along to have the house designs, they did submit in your packet some designs for the townhomes, which would be threeplexes, so you see those. We normally require a buffer between two residential developments, the exception is with the new code that we adopted, multifamily does have some buffering adjacent to single family, so I, we'll, we'll say a pitch that the new code is, is working in some aspects. The amount of traffic on Dubuque Street, we did install a covert traffic device to measure traffic coming in both directions. The average weekday, and I didn't take the weekday, southbound traffic was one thousand one hundred and sixty-seven vehicles, and northbound traffic was one thousand six hundred and fifty-three vehicles. Dubuque Street is a collector's street, this isn't a large impact to that, to that street. With the proposed development, we would anticipate two hundred and sixty-two average vehicle trips per day, so we don't anticipate that proposed development is going to negatively impact Dubuque Street, nor do we feel that Dubuque Street has any capacity issues at this time. The location of the condominium development within the subdivision, that was addressed with the second submission. Style of home sites being proposed, selling points, applicants' experience with construction within subdivisions, again, some of these, some of these things aren't known at this time. If the development were offer more affordable homes for sale, it's my understanding they're going to offer them for market rate, and how the proposed development would impact capacity at Christine Grant Elementary. I did email, the school board received an email yesterday that said there would be no capacity issues at Christine Grant with the proposed development. Again, just to reiterate, we did receive one objection from the property owner at eighty Marmot Circle, we haven't received any other formal objections at this time. And just, here's another look at the development, a couple of things that I'll mention is, whenever you have at least, whenever you have thirty or more residential units in a subdivision, fire prevention requires a minimum of two accesses off the public street. I know Dubuque Street comes up and kind of curves through there, so, what we did ask for is those two driveways to be as far apart as possible without getting into that curve. Admittedly, you see a lot of traffic in the AM with kids, people are dropping their kids off to school or picking them up. I don't recall seeing traffic backed up on Dubuque Street, it certainly does on Centro. These are your approval standards with the new code, those are nice to have. The inconsistency with the proposed amendment with the comprehensive plan, as residential, it would be consistent. Compatibility of the zoning with nearby property, staff's opinion that the requested zoning would be more compatible with the area as opposed to industrial or commercial development. The compatibility with the established neighborhood character, and again, we, I think Centro's kind of an exception, you have Christine Grant, then Centro, and then you have Fox Run, so I think the primary character of this area is, is residential, particularly as you get close to Dubuque Street. Feasibility of developing the property with one of the more permitted uses under the existing zoning classification, the property could be developed in accordance with commercial industrial zoning, I think that would actually add more traffic, obviously, than, than a residence development, we just think residential zoning and land use is more appropriate in this location. And number six is not applicable. Again, just here's a breakdown, this never works for me out here, I tried to do it as PDF, so I apologize, but just kind of a breakdown of residential uses in the city. I do need to update this as, as we've got quite a, quite a bit of development in the hopper. We do have a finding, which is the proposed zoning would achieve consistency with section one sixty-five oh nine, if the comprehensive plan is amended to residential and one sixty-five oh nine is those approval standards that I just mentioned. So, staff does recommend that the planning commission accept the listed finding and forward the zoning map amendment to the City Council with the recommendation for approval.
Thanks, Ryan. We then have opportunity for applicant presentation, if you'd like to make a presentation, please introduce yourself.
My name's Brad Cummins, and with Dan Bernanke, we're asking for the rezoning for the development. Like Ryan said, we're looking at seven threeplex buildings and sixty-one single family units. As a North Liberty resident, I feel like it's a good opportunity to have residential as a buffer between the other neighborhood and the existing industrial. We look forward to creating a neighborhood that will be appealing and beneficial to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. And are there any public comments at this time? All right, if none, we'll move on to questions and comments from the commission.
So, I know that the two streets that are coming on to Dubuque and off of Dubuque are as far apart as possible, how, about how far is that? Anybody know? Quarter mile?
That, well, that was my concern as well, because it's got to be north of that, that power plant or whatever that, the power generation driveway and before the curve.
Yeah, I don't have dimension, it's, we've got, it's got to be like six, seven hundred feet, I think.
Well, and this is just preliminary, right? I mean, this isn't the.
Yeah, we didn't review the plan itself, other than looked at the concept.
It looks like six hundred and twenty feet, according to the schematic that.
Rough, yeah.
So, it's about two, about two feet of field.
And Ryan, you said that's required by code, since there's more than thirty houses.
Yeah, you got to have two. You know, we initially kind of looked at some during the initial discussions, kind of, you know, maybe having a emergency fire department access up to Scales Bend Road, but we just, we just didn't like that as a, as an option, so, felt it was as much better to have those two accesses, again, spread as far out as they could. The property does drain kind of to the southwest, kind of where that road is, so, that'll, that'll present some challenges, but I think the initial concept showed a big stormwater detention pond there, and we kind of challenged them that, you know, you probably need to get the road over there as far as you can, and really get that separation.
So, I know you did the, the traffic studies, and one of the intersections that I've never been a huge fan of is, is Penn and Dubuque, there, on the western side, where, where it is, where Dubuque goes north. With this going in, I mean, additional homes there, I mean, is there any concern or thoughts about how that intersection may change?
You mean the backup north, like pizza, the pizza plus intersection?
That's right there, that's right there by the railroad track. It's just, I mean, I know that we've done a lot with trying to get sightlines better, and we've, you know, we've, we've tried to improve the, the crosswalk there, and we're going to have additional children, you know, trying to traverse Penn Street there now at that, at that intersection, it's just, you know, it's just something that comes to my mind when we're talking about trying to throw more homes onto Dubuque Street with that intersection.
Yeah, we have not, we have not looked at any of the, the site plan yet. We can comment on that when we look at the site plan as well. I would, I would imagine that the pedestrian traffic won't increase, because those will be going to Grant.
They, they would, but I'm just thinking, you know, for, for example, like, kids that may be wanting to go to the rec center, right? I mean, that, they'd have to traverse right there in order to get to the rec center, and we're adding more traffic, you know, you know, pedestrian traffic there, because those, you know, those homes would be pretty quick access to the rec center, and so, you might see, so, yes, I mean, the, the idea probably would be that that area would go to Christine Grant, so you wouldn't have any of that sort of traffic, those, those, that pedestrian traffic increase at all, but summertime uses, or, you know, getting to the baseball fields or, or anything else, right? It's just, it's just something I just want to, to make a mention of, that that's, it's not the best intersection.
Yeah, they, I guess the only, in terms of the rezoning, the only thing we thought of is that residential is going to generate less traffic than industrial and commercial, so that's kept it so far.
And I do think, we, we've talked internally about this, whether the timing, but, you know, as Penn Street traffic picks up more and more and more, you know, I, I think at some point in time, we're going to have to take a closer look at Penn Street, that section between front and, you know, Ranshaw, and see what kind of improvements we're going to need there, and.
Sure.
And, you know, that, you know, we might need, you know, a center turn lane and things like that, and improve intersections and things like that, but I, as I see more and more traffic along there, I see that as something we're going to have to look at pretty soon.
I definitely agree with the statement about industrial traffic not only would increase if we didn't allow this residential use, but that industrial traffic really makes a mess on that Penn, that intersection that he's talking about, trying to turn off a Penn onto North Dubuque. You get backed up past the railroad track, and.
Well, this is something, you know, Ryan and I had talked about, you know, I think right now Centro's at, you know, kind of one shift only, but you never know if these things change, and they go to two, three shifts, and now you have traffic, you know, constantly.
The other interesting concept that we don't know the results of yet is how the Dubuque Street project will impact, the exist, the Dubuque Street project that just started will impact the other side of that intersection that you're talking about. In theory, traffic should go down there because we'll be diverting it to.
The roundabout.
So, I think there are a couple of variables out there into the other Ryan's point, we're going to need to study Penn Street as a whole here before too long.
I appreciate the, I appreciated the walkthrough of all the concerns as well, Ryan, because those were things that I had heard questions in the community about as well.
A lot of, lot of great comments, and you always hope you get really good attendance at these, so we're really pleased with the amount of people that, that came out, and I think there always initially, there's that shock of something's going to be developed there, and then, you know, we, we try and work through those concerns, but sometimes they're hard to answer right at the, the initial stage.
Ryan, I do have another question, the number five, talking about the trail on the north side, is that, so that is not, we don't have, there's not, we can't require that in code, that's not a.
So, so far, we've talked about asking the developer to, to put that in, they've been receptive to that idea, and I think it'd be an important trail connection, so, and I appreciate you mentioning that, because I overlooked that, but if we could get an eight-foot wide trail along that north property line, that would connect up to the Ranshaw Trail, over to the, the trail behind Cedar Springs, and then provide a really good access down to the school. I do know that Fox Run and Cedar Springs both have access points to allow development there. We will have Dubuque Street to have the eight-foot trail along Dubuque Street, it's my understanding that the substation had deferred until such time, so we'll get that trail connection all the way through, so that'll be an important one, but, again, with the comp plan, I think we're looking at kind of putting in our overall trail network. The one thing that, that comes up is, we do know that drainage is going to be a problem along that north property line, and so, that's going to be an important part of this in the design, if, if, you know, you need to address the drainage and that, that, you know, may take away the, the ability to put a trail through there, hopefully, we can get both of them in there, that would be nice.
Any other questions?
I have one about the individual driveway access, is that, you said there is a thousand cars in either direction, is that going to be a treacherous backing up?
No, so those aren't onto that, like, so, that, those are what the traffic counts are on Dubuque Street, so they would just be backing up onto the internal streets in their subdivision, and so, those would be very low impact. The way it's designed, I think it makes perfect sense to have them backing up on there. Like I said, it's normal that we would see a, a private street and development on both sides, in this case, you just have one backing up two houses, so, we, we didn't see it as an issue at all.
Any other questions, comments?
Nope.
Otherwise, I'm open to a motion, and Ryan has a suggested one for us.
I'll make the motion. I move that the planning commission accept the listed findings and forward the zoning map amendment to the City Council with recommendation for approval.
Motion by Miller?
I'll second.
Second by Heisler?
Are we okay? The site plan, it was, because this is for the site plan, correct? Or my, did I skip ahead?
Zoning.
Zoning, I'm sorry, okay, thank you.
Got it. We're okay.
Ignore me.
That's all right, so then we'll go with a roll call vote. Willer?
Aye.
Ahern?
Aye.
Staber?
Aye.
Bafki?
Aye.
Vincent?
Aye.
Heisler?
Aye.
Alrighty. Agenda item number five, Archie's break-in lube site plan.
So, I didn't want to spend a whole lot of time on this, but, so, this is Archie's, they're moving just down the street to a new location, property zone C two A, land use is commercial, we do allow minor automobile repair in C two A. Here's the proposed site plan. Should have stopped doing that. It's kind of centered on the lot, I did ask the reason for that, they do have the area to the west that they're looking at, possibly a future expansion, what we initially asked was, hey, can we move the development down to the west a little bit more? If you may recall, that Taco Bell had kind of the western part of their lot, so the hope was that you could combine the vacant part of this lot and Taco Bell into a, a new commercial lot. Again, they, they told me about the potential for expansion, so they do have an area, still a green space on the east side, which leaves an opportunity, I think, for a developable site, possibly. But it's just under a six thousand square foot building, don't have a color rendering, but, but it, it looks pretty nice. Masonry requirements, the overhead. Masonry requirements, the overhead doors have glazing in them, which, which we like. So it does meet all of the standards for the design for city code. Again, two findings, I won't state them, but, and then staff does recommend that you accept two listed findings and forward the site plan to city council with a recommendation for approval.
Hey, thank you, Ryan. Now we have time for an applicant presentation. If you'd like to make one.
I'm Adrian Bricker with Acxiom Consultants. I'm here on behalf of the developer, Ron Mace, who's not here, and also Steve Schmidt. Basically, yes, Archie's quick lube is going to be going on into the Liberty Way and Penn Street. And basically Ryan summed everything up. Sounds like we're meeting code, everything that you guys require. So if there's any questions or anything that I might be able to answer.
Okay, thank you. And we have an opening for public comment if, if there are any. And then we'll move to questions and comments from the commission. Do we have any for Ryan or the applicant?
I have no questions.
Seemed fairly straightforward.
Yeah.
Okay, if we don't have any questions or comments, then I'd open the floor for a motion and Ryan does have a recommendation for, recommended one for us if you want to use it.
I can move that the planning commission accept the two listed findings and forward the site plan to city council with a recommendation for approval.
Motion by Heisler?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Miller? Tracy, could we have a roll call? Bathke?
Aye.
Staber?
Aye.
Willer?
Aye.
Heisler?
Aye.
Ahern?
Aye.
Vincent?
Aye.
Great. Agenda item number six, Forever Green Estates preliminary subdivision plat. Ryan for the staff representation again.
Okay.
Presentation.
So current zoning is RS4, RS6, RD10, RM8, RM12, and C2A. So here's the current zoning as it was recently changed. Land use is residential, commercial, and commercial with residential. And here is the proposed preliminary plat. Couple of things to consider. You've got Remley Street, which is the northernmost street. That will be a collector's street that will run from Kansas to Jones Boulevard. And then you, we also have Alexander Way, which is the easternmost north, south street. That is also a collector's street. Both of those will have eight foot wide trails. We did ask the developer to develop or construct a roundabout. They agreed to do so at the intersection. We thought that was important. We envisioned that being kind of a little bit more of a compact roundabout, similar to the one at Penn and Front Street. But we felt this was an opportunity to just not put two stop signs here. It does cause a couple of outlots adjacent to those. So they did lose some lots, but they were, they were very nice to work with. Rest of the development along the north is the single family. You know, we have some duplex, zero lot duplexes on the east side here. And then the west side is primarily multifamily until you get to the southeast corner and that's commercial. You see the interior roadway network. We did ask that an eight foot trail between Remley going down to Forever Green Road, that they install an eight foot wide trail on the east side of South Kansas Avenue. And the reason at this point is because, you know, people utilizing the trail, it's not, wouldn't be a very safe crossing at that point. You know, who knows what the future holds with Steinler, you know, whether that's signalized or whatnot. But it felt it was much safer to have folks come up eventually and then make their way down to the intersection of Forever Green in Kansas if they wanted to cross at that location. We did have a neighborhood meeting on March 22. I do see the sealmans in the audience. They are the property owners directly to the north. We had a couple of property owners that attended that were directly adjacent to this. I think the, the sealmans are, are most affected. The area I have on the TV right now is in area circled in red is a low point that doesn't have an apparent immediate stormwater outfall. So it's kind of unique. So it's kind of a bowl and then water kind of comes down into this area. I'm going to let Kevin speak a little bit more to the details on this. But the initial concept we had was outfalling the stormwater over onto the Seelman property. What the developer, we, we kind of pushed them back a little bit and said, you need to come up with a better solution than that. So the current design, and again, it hasn't been engineered, this is preliminary plat, but they are proposing to take up to the hundred year storm, which is the 1% annual storm, capture all that stormwater from their property and ship it south, not to the north. Again, I'm going to let Kevin speak to a little bit more of those details. But generally speaking, we agree with that design solution. Let's see here. We do have two findings and I won't repeat them, but as designed meets city code. Again, we have a, a couple of recommendations. There's a sanitary sewer force main that runs along the north property line. Also agreed to put some landscaping adjacent to the Seelman property, that area be left unobstructed with private homeowner fences. There is a agricultural fence that runs between the two properties. I'm not exactly sure if it's exactly on the property line or where that is. But we did want the homeowners association to be responsible for the area on the south side. The sealmans will probably speak to that as well. The preliminary plat be revised, do include a restriction about lot 24 not having direct access to Kansas Avenue. So with that, the city staff recommends approval. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ryan. Is there an applicant presentation?
Hi, Chris Thompson, NMS consultants here, representing applicant. I think Ryan pretty much touched on everything and I'm just here to answer questions should they arise.
Thank you. And is there any public comment?
Hi, I'm Bev Silman and my husband Jim is with me. I'm going to give you a little history about us. Jim and I are both born and raised on farms. Jim near Cosgrove, myself north of Tiffin. We have lived in the North Liberty since 1983. We purchased our Century Farm in 1992 from my uncle. My ancestors settled North Liberty, the denizens. Our family has been in the area our entire life and our parents' life and, and beyond. Our farm was designated as a Century Farm in 2009, which means it has been in my family for 100 years. And we are headed for the designation of a heritage farm, which is 150 years, which will be in the year 2059, of course, which Jim and I will be around to see that. But we hope that our children and grandchildren will continue this feat as there are not many heritage farms in Iowa. Of course, we are naturally protective of our land and have many questions so that we can maintain the quality of farm life that we currently have. We currently raise cattle, horses, hay, pasture, and have a crop rotation of corn and sorbians every other year. Jim and I have put a lot of sweat equity into our farm as my uncle only had one arm and was in his eighties when he moved from our place. And the place needed a lot of repair when we moved there. We have raised our barn and put a new foundation under it to preserve it and sited and roofed it. We've also moved four buildings from another family member farm in 2012 to preserve those buildings as well as they were built from 10 acres of timber that the Setman family owned. The history is rich on our farm and we brought our children up on this farm to teach them the farm way of life. Work hard to preserve your heritage. This means a lot to Jim and I. We built our home in 2000 with the plans to die there or live in the house as long as we were able. What, what is happening is very disheartening to us to see valuable flat black farmland being torn up into cookie cutter houses and making developers rich. We hear all the time, your property is worth a lot of money. In our response to this, only if you want to sell it. We have put so much sweat and equity and money into making our place what it is today and to try and preserve our farm heritage and the buildings that make farm life great and the state of Iowa great. So we have multiple questions about this proposal. Ryan sent them, sent us the proposal. And we had several questions. First thing that we noticed that we had originally asked for a 20 foot buffer along our fence line with two rows of six to 10 foot evergreens planted. Instead, we have a 10 set, a 10 foot landscape buffer and a 20 foot one along Kansas, which isn't against our property. Fencing is a large concern as Ryan mentioned. We've got animals, of course, and there's going to be multiple property owners along our property. When you have several owners, it's going to make, who is going to maintain the Bowman property half of the fence line? And then will it be turned over to a homeowners association when the lots are built out? And then what kind of fight will we have to keep the fence maintained and fixed? We also don't need anyone crossing the fence onto our property so that they're safe from our animals and whatever. We don't need them touching our animals. And then what kind of a maintenance will be along the fence so it doesn't grow up into weeds, et cetera? We also don't need construction undercutting our fence. And there's also several tile lines that run into our property along the east wind's fence line. And then we want to know how those will be handled, if they're going to be capped or if they're going to be cut and not fixed because that will cause us future problems. The Outlet A proposed open space, we've got concerns with, what does that mean? Since there are no elevations showing on our property, it is hard to tell if the grades are higher on the Bowman property than our property. But not just an Outlet A, but clear along the fence line. Outlet A cannot be higher than our property to keep water backed up onto our property, make it continually wet. And that was the area Ryan had circled in red. Right now ours is currently dry. There's no water standing and the other side has water standing and has had it for quite some time. So we want to make sure that Outlet A is low enough. But we can't tell with the grades on the sheet and no grades on our side if it is low enough. We feel that the density along the fence line is too large. We had asked for larger lots along our fence line. And then also when we've had the good neighbor meeting, they did not have, well, I can't show you because.
Little window keeps popping up.
Ruth Avenue apparently is running into our property. The last prelim did not show that running and that's next to Outlet A on the east side. That was not there when we, when we got a picture on March 22. And then we would like to have questions about is Bowman property raising the grade along our fence line? And again, we can't tell because there's no grade showing on the preliminary plat. Another thing that concerns us is there are street lights all along Remley. We don't like those not to be shining on our, onto our property all night long. And then also is there going to be a traffic light at Remley? And is there enough visibility from the north with the rise in the street on Remley? Because there's, we kind of live on a hill and there's, our mailbox sits on a hill. So we've got maybe some concerns with visibility. And then we've had some questions about what's proposed to happen in the corner of our property, the southwest corner. That never really got fixed from the Kansas Avenue project. And right now it's kind of sits in a hole and we just need to know the intentions of how that's going to be dealt with. On lot 26, the notes indicate that the existing e, access easement is to be vacated. Could anybody tell me or tell us what that exactly means? And then the same, there's another note on lot 26 that says the permanent drainage easement to be vacated. I guess we just liked some clarification on what that means as well. And we'd also like to know the plans for lot 26, outlet B and outlet C. We had requested less density along our fence line by the house so that we were not looking at so many rooftops and backyards. Who will be maintaining outlet A after construction is completed? So it does not grow up into weeds and trees. Another thing we've noticed is south of Bob and Joyce Raricks, there shows a lot of hydrants. Are those from the old greenhouse or what is going on in that area? And we cannot have any water getting pushed onto us that is not already naturally flowing there, especially in the area of Outlet A. Currently, as I said before, there's water standing in the proposed outlet A area, but our side is dry. And I guess we're concerned, are we going to be looking at cookie cutter houses or is there going to be some variations such as what's being in the built in Tiffin in the Anderson subdivision? And then setbacks from the fence for sheds or anything along our fence line? I guess we just need to know if it's going to be able to be built up along the fence line or if there will be some setbacks or if there are setbacks required. And I guess the bottom line of our concern is that we just can't have any more water or no water that's not already there being pushed onto our property, especially in the outlet A area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, we'll move on to questions and comments from the commission. Any comments from you or discussion of the public or staff presentation?
Maybe we proceed with the rest of the, is there additional staff?
Yeah, I can try and answer.
Yeah.
That's what I wanted to say. Do you have some responses for us? Would be my question.
Kevin to fill in the gaps.
Okay.
But you know, when this originally went for rezoning, the area west of the pond was, you had recommended, we had asked for, you had recommended approval as RS4, which was single family residential, understanding that we were adjacent to the sealmans. When I got to city council, there was a motion to amend the zoning to make that area multifamily. So that was a council action. They voted on and approved it. That's ultimately how it was. So understand the concerns, but you know, the zoning is what the zoning is. The area along the north property line, again, as I mentioned, there's a sanitary sewer force main along there. As we went through the rezoning process, we recommended, and it was approved, that there be at least a 10 foot landscape easement along that area. We're going to have to get into the construction plans to see exactly where that planting, we need to be careful about what goes in there. Lynn County RAC also has infrastructure in there as well. So it does, it does place limitations on there. We did hear that concern about the fence. So what we are asking is part of our recommendation for approval is that the area of the 10 foot landscape easement and sanitary sewer force main be left unobstructed and that that area on the south side of the fence be maintained by the homeowners association for the subdivision. What a lot of times we see is, we're about to see it now with fence season, even though there's an easement in there, the code doesn't necessarily prevent you from putting fences within private homeowner fences within easements. So what we are recommending as a condition for approval is that that area remain unobstructed by those types of structures that would include sheds in order to, so you don't have fences going up and tying into that fence essentially. And that allows for the HOA, the future HOA to have access to that area and maintain it. Now, let's see, I know I'm forgetting a whole bunch. Street lights are really a code requirement. They're at intersection of streets, Kevin.
Yes.
But you probably want to talk a little bit more about the stormwater.
Sure. All right. So as it's been mentioned a couple of times tonight, and Ryan had a map earlier too, that kind of showed that it's kind of a natural, naturally occurring depression in this area. It's, it's an odd.
The red circled area?
Topographic area. Yeah. That we haven't had to deal with yet or the, or the developer. They originally submitted a plan that would have, have a detention pond and would outlet onto the Seelman's property. But it just, it wouldn't, wouldn't work and it wouldn't meet our code. So we told them, you need to come up with a, a new plan. It, they did. What, what this is, is a it's approximately, is it 37 acres roughly, the watershed? 47 acres that drain to this low area. And then if it would ever fill up, I think it takes at least 18 inches or so to fill up. And then would, it would over top to the north. It's slightly, slightly lower to the north. I don't know how often that happens. Probably not very often. Okay, yeah, it's a pretty big area. Anyway, what they've decided to do here is put a detention pond in that low area on the property that they own and then pipe it to the south. the property that they own and then pipe it to the south. What this means for the developer is they have to make their detention ponds, and you can see they've got a pretty extensive detention pond system here, larger than our code would normally require, because they're still obligated to meet the code requirements for the flow going to the south so that we don't overburden a drainage way or a property owner to the south. So that's what they're planning on doing is, is meeting our code and oversizing those ponds so the south-- we haven't seen construction plans yet. We haven't seen the drainage cals. We saw some preliminary cals created by the developer and their team, and it appears like it's feasible and it appears like it'll work, but we don't know yet until we see all the cals and the plans. The other concern is the remaining 14 acres, I think, on the sealman property that's still drained to that low area. So we're not exactly sure how that drains out today, whether it's just infiltrated into the ground or whether they're underground field tiles, which Bev has also mentioned too, the concern about field tiles. So that has to continue to drain for the sealmans. So the-- they're going to be required to dig along the perimeter of their subdivision and search for those underground field tiles and locate them and get the elevations on them and make sure that this development is not going to block an existing underground field tile that could harm another property that always has to function. So I'm sure--
And if they do damage it, I'm sorry, the developer will be required to repair those and connect them. So that's part of their developer's agreement for any subdivision.
What else?
Streetlights.
Yeah, streetlights. They're required at every intersection and then no more than 600 feet apart. And there, they'll be downcast so they won't shine over on another person's property. Remley, yeah, we did feel it's very important to have that roundabout installed now because Alexander Way is going to come down north-south. Remley is going to go from Jones to here. So there'll be two collector's streets intersecting. So we might as well make sure we've got the property so we don't need a traffic signal. I would prefer to have a roundabout. I think they're safer and they'll help to calm traffic as well.
Talk about the location of that north-south street because we had asked for that.
Oh, yeah. We had also asked for that stubb street that Bev mentioned right adjacent to Outlet A. The distance between Alexander and Kansas, that's-- how many feet is that roughly? It's a good distance and it's, as neighborhoods develop and should the sealman family ever decide to develop it and into residential, you know, we would want neighborhoods that are connected both for pedestrians and for vehicles rather than send everyone out to the collectors. It just works better to have connected streets like that. So that's why we were commenting to the developer that we wanted a stubb street to the north. For an example, the Preserve subdivision to the sealman's other side of the property, exact same situation and reasoning there is we have stubb streets stubb to the south so that the neighborhoods could connect for pedestrians as well as local traffic.
I think the last one that comes to my mind was the location of existing easements. I think those are just part of the-- part of the easements are located on the property currently, so they're just being vacated as part of this process, as part of the replating process.
Yeah, and I don't know specifically where those easements are. But yeah, I'm assuming that they just need to be vacated.
Written Lot 26.
Which, I can't read the lot numbers.
Northwest lot.
Yeah, along the northwest.
Yeah, the permanent drainage easement, that's just for the end of an existing culvert pipe. So that can go away when this is developed because that'll be tied into the storm sewer system. It was a local square easement just needed for that one property. So if this is developed, it would no longer be needed. The only comment I have on the area in the northwest that would be west of Outlet A is Russ mentioned that the city council preferred that to be something other than single families is because of the driveways. Someone recognized that we don't want direct driveways on Remley that close to Kansas, which is a good idea because we did ask them to also put in a left turn lane. And we don't want a bunch of driveways there that close to Kansas because there could be some queuing vehicles. So that was the thought process on it. Honestly, the remainder properties, it's not very big. It's long and narrow, and they're not going to be able to develop very heavily. I'm kind of curious to see what will work in that area. But we wouldn't allow many driveways and with the existing easements there and the width of it, you know, they're not going to be able to really have a parking lot or not much of one. So I'm not sure exactly how that will develop unless they have a small parking lot in between and maybe have a couple of units off to the sides.
Yeah, and this is an area where we would not want people in multifamily, right, backing onto Remley, right? So we wouldn't allow that. So there'll have to be some kind of internal private street or something like that for the multifamily.
It's a good catch, whoever that was.
Yeah. And then the last comment I remember is the 20-foot landscape buffer along Kansas. That's actually required in the subdivision ordinance for residential development when you're on an arterial road.
So Ryan, help me understand the process and how many opportunities the landowner, the adjacent landowner will have to express their concerns. They'll be able to express it at the council if this goes forward?
Mm-hmm.
And then that's still not even the construction plans.
Right. So the construction plans are reviewed administratively. We have no problem sharing them with the sealmans and saying, you know, we've reviewed it and, you know, here's what we're looking at. So we're an open book at the city, and so even though they're administrative, we're committed to sharing information.
Absolutely. Jim and Bev, you know my phone number, so we've met before and reviewed construction plans. So, yeah, like Ryan said, we're an open book and would be happy to share those as they're being developed.
Because I heard repeatedly the concern about water that doesn't naturally already flow to the property. They're very concerned about it. And you guys had several comments about that, and I appreciate that. But the construction plan stage is even more critical, right? Because that's when all the-- you see the very detail on how are we going to divert it? So I just wanted to make sure I understood the process, that there's several more opportunities for discussion and reference of that water direction.
Yep.
Yeah, and the engineer who's going to be designing it is sitting right there. So he's well aware of the concern and the issue too, so.
That phase will happen this year. That first phase is going to be that middle arm, I think is what it's called. And so we won't even touch that until wetland permits are in place. So there's still some time for that to come down.
So there's not-- Remley doesn't currently come off of Jones anywhere, right?
It's--
And there's homes that line Jones Boulevard, north and south?
That's in phase, right?
Yeah, that's in the Mickelson development, which has been approved, just hasn't been constructed yet.
Okay. And then there was a discussion about HOA taking care of the property that would be south of the fence line. But yet, just so that I understand, the property would go, you know, individual property lots would go directly to the fence line?
Correct.
Are there other situations where an HOA is taking care of private property instead of--
Yeah.
--that being a buffer of this is part of the HOA--
Yeah, we actually--
And they're taking that? I just--
Yeah, I actually found a document in the Preserve subdivision. It was a recorded landscape easement. And I kind of talked to Grant about that and said, you know, and this is, the developer agreed to it. You know, we said, you know, this is a concern. Is this something you'd be okay with? Forwarded the landscape easement to Grant. We thought that could be a suitable solution. So it's really as part of, as we get further along, we'll have this document prepared and recorded and signed by the developer in there, which moves on to their successors and signs.
Yeah, Ryan nailed it. That's, it'll be an easement that runs with the land and for the benefit of the HOA. And then it'll be their responsibility to, and then failing to maintain that in part of our agreement, the city will be able to maintain it and assess the cost of the HOA if it doesn't get done properly.
Okay.
So we will have standards that we will expect the HOA to maintain.
Okay. I just, you know, my concern was that the city wouldn't have the ability to go in and enforce it because, you know, other HOAs, you know, it's an HOA, you know, private person in the development, and those two have to work out the details about how things are going to be done and just making sure that, you know, property owners understand that if they decide to challenge the HOA covenants or whatever is built into it, you know, to try to say, well, I'm going to build a fence straight north. I'm going to put a, you know, a shed, you know, in that area that, you know, if the HOA doesn't take care of it, the city will then step in and require that that's done and make, and then fix, remedy the situation and then build the HOA.
And so to respond to your question as thoroughly as I can, it is not as effective as, say, an outlaw that would be owned--
Of course.
--by an HOA, right? It is, however, as effective as we're going to need it to be than having a landscape, a permanent landscape easement there, along with an agreement with the HOA that has, that sets forth the city's rights of enforcing it with those documents. So those documents will be part of the subdivision approval process, that I will draft those and make sure that they're satisfactory and that we have the rights that we need. But to your point, no, normally it would be an outlaw owned by the HOA. And so that our ability to assess, by the way, of property taxes that we normally would, wouldn't be available to us. But by way of, by way of contract, yeah. So it's--
Is there any reason why it's not just being turned into a small outlaw?
I think that, I think that easement, having an easement area allows satisfied setback requirements.
And lot area, lot area requirements.
Because if it was HOA property, then the lot would get smaller for the owner.
And then, that's right.
I remember a lot of those lots, especially on the north end towards the east or that RS4, so they're a little bit larger lots.
And so this easement would be the easement that says no sheds and you can't get a fence. So people wouldn't be able to tie into that back fence, but they'd still be able to fence in their backyard as long as there's a setback.
Yes.
And that's--
I mean, it's lot limiting, but that for the purpose that's intended.
And that's one of the issues that we have. We have plats with drainage easements. There is a nuisance, there is ordinance language for nuisances. You can't block drainage, but it doesn't prevent people printing fences in those, in those areas. So it helps me when we review fence permits to say, no, you know, we'll have that as a final note, a note on the final plat that you can't put fences in that location. They should know about them. They always, they always claim they don't, but it will help us keep fences out of that area and sheds and things.
And just, in addition to that easement, we would probably ask that the developer put something in their covenants with respect to those lots. That's not for us to enforce, but that would help them enforce that against law owners that didn't comply. So there's--
Many reminders as you can have.
That's, the idea is, yes, that's right.
So could you educate me a little bit? How are HOAs administered?
So--
I live in one where it seems like there's no administration. There's--
I'm going to, I hope the internet's still down so we're not boring the people at home. Covenants require that every law owner is automatically a member of an HOA. We review the HOA corporate documents, make sure that they're submitted properly to the Secretary of State and the entity is properly formed. And then the document, the entity itself will have certain rights and responsibilities for maintenance of common areas. And in this, in this instance, we'll also have maintenance obligations for the easement area belong to lots 26 through whatever. And then the easement document will have to give the city the right to inspect and enter upon those, that area to make sure, to ensure that it's properly maintained. And that easement agreement will say that they'll put this in their covenants and that they'll, they'll renew their covenants timely and in such a manner that, so we'll have various belts and suspenders in play to make sure that there are, that the landscape easement stays where it's supposed to be and maintains the way it is and that the city, part of it is that the city doesn't end up holding the bag for the cost of maintaining it, that it's shared by the property owners who live there.
So--
Is that responsive?
So 10 years, I'm just, I'm just trying to think this through. So 10 years down the road, if somebody violates the covenants in this housing development, the property owners on the other side, the sealmans can--
Notify the city.
Okay.
I mean, they can certainly notify the property owners and say, hey, but the, the city would notify the HOA to correct that. And if not, then the city could take corrective action depending on how we draft that. Bev has a, I think Bev has one, have a question.
It's just important that they don't rip the fence out since we do have livestock. So that's a concern is just, you know, not tying into it and whatever, but they can't just start taking out sections of fence because it's easier to maintain because we have livestock. So that's a concern, you know, because we're going to have, what, 20 or 30 property owners and we can't just have, you know, this guy take it out because then we'll have livestock running all over North Liberty. So I guess that's part of our concern as well as just the fence.
And I think, I think Mr. Rustick may have mentioned that the part of this is that there's going to be a non-development area other than landscape that no one can touch the, you know. And what Bev's talking about is a crime. You can't tear down someone else's fence. And we do enforce crimes. So that's, would also be something we wouldn't permit.
Somebody has to maintain, like right now, it's left-hand rule. We take care of the left-hand side, the adjacent property takes care of the right-hand side. We need to make sure that that, you know, not only the property that is in that, but it also is taking care of the fence. So the main thing.
Yeah, and I would add, you know, we're going a step further than just having these things in the covenants and restrictions. Obviously, they're part of the, in this case, resolution for approval. They'll make these conditions onto the plat, which gives us another level of enforcement.
And state law also provides for the maintenance of what this is called a three-part, a tight fence. Under state law requires maintenance of property owners on the other side. So if for some reason a part of the area does get damaged, then they can talk to the township fence viewers and they can initiate a process to get recovery. Hopefully, it would never come to that. Hopefully, we just have the, make sure that the landscape buffer is maintained and no one, no one has issues. But there are remedies at law available for those things. And we can't, we're not trying to cover every possible eventuality, but we're trying to cover most of the bases we could reasonably expect to have happen.
Okay, thank you.
It's also good to know there's a foundation in law about the fence and who maintains what side of it coming from a state of farms. So this issue's come up, yeah. Okay. Okay. Other questions or comments from the commission?
If these drainage ponds that are proposed or built and they end up not working and a lot of water is ending up on their property, what would be done at that point?
They're designed in accordance with SUDAS and our 100-year flood plain--
Correct. You know, first they have to be designed by a licensed engineer and then they have to certify it when it's done, that it was designed correctly, and they have to do as built, et cetera. And as far as if a damage occurs because I'm assuming it's caused by the person creating the damage?
Generally, yeah. There would need to be, someone would need to establish that someone was negligent some way in allowing the water or intentional in allowing water to go where it wasn't supposed to go, prove damages. So that would get resolved in accord.
Other questions or comments?
No.
Otherwise, at this time, I would look for a motion, and we do have a suggested one if you'd like.
Put my--
Where is it?
Yeah.
52.
Yeah.
Well, I'll move that the planning commission accept the two listed conditions and forward the preliminary plat to the city council with recommendation for approval, subject to the two conditions listed by city staff.
Motion by Heisler?
I'll second it.
Second by Stabler, Tracy, could we have a roll call vote, please? Willer?
Aye.
Heisler?
Aye.
Ahern?
Aye.
Vincent?
Aye.
Bathke?
Aye.
Staber?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, staff presentation and public comments and applicant presentation. We'll move on to item number seven on the agenda, the Solomon Landings preliminary subdivision plat.
Okay, so this is another large preliminary plat, you've seen the zonings come through, so this is the preliminary plat and then the subsequent request is part of the multifamily development and all proposed to kind of come together at city council next week. So current zonings here are proposed to be RS9, RM21, and C2A. Your land use is residential and commercial. And here's the preliminary plat, I think we have all seen kind of concepts of how the development was going to go, obviously Jones Boulevard is designed and going to be bid very soon, so we anticipate utility, overhead utilities to be relocated, easements and right away are secured, so we expect that to happen pretty soon, and then we'll commence with the construction of Jones Boulevard, also you see a section of West Penn Street being widened there to that two-lane section in each direction. There's another view of Jones as you go up further towards 240th. Public meeting, Good Neighbor Meeting was held in conjunction with the Good Neighbor Meeting for the rezoning, that was on January 27, 2022, again, I think people were just generally curious about the development, I think the only negative I heard potentially was that the multi-use trail on the west side had a couple of conflicts with proposed streets, but sometimes those are unavoidable. The one thing that we did have them produce a traffic study, so you'll see kind of where Saratoga Lane is, at the, at the top, that would be at the west end on the frontage, that lines up with the strip center across the street that has Country Lane on the south side. Originally, they had shown kind of the access lining up where Al Pelling was, but the traffic study had come back and said, we recommend that it be located to line up with this, that's an off-site improvement, that's on somebody else's property, so it is going to take some cooperation from the adjacent landowner to the west there. Mr. Pratt's in the audience, I think he's had those conversations, I'll leave kind of how those conversations have gone. The timing of that signal and the installation of that infrastructure is kind of dependent on how the development proceeds, obviously, if you have all of the development, we're going to have to have signal there, but development is, is going to progress, obviously, with the first phase of residential, and so the conditions that we are recommending kind of talk mostly about the timing of that infrastructure in that signal. So we did have two findings, similar to the last request. Let's see here, we do have three conditions, the Metropolitan Planning Organization of Johnson County had a couple of comments to the traffic study, so we'd like to have those incorporated and re-reviewed before it goes to city council. Right away for Saratoga Place, be dedicated to the city of North Liberty, and if its structure constructed and accepted with the issuance of billing permits for 116, 117, 118, if the type of development warrants it, there's a big difference between how much traffic is generated by an office as opposed to a convenience store, the latter being obviously much more, much higher, so it really depends on what gets developed in here, so instead of just saying, well, put a 400 or, you know, $400,000 traffic study, it will be at the developer's expense, right at the initial phase, it didn't make sense until we knew exactly what type of development, city reserves the right to ask for the traffic study to be updated to warrant that, similar to the design, these traffic studies were performed by a licensed engineer, Mr. Tramm will review that, see if we agree with it, along with our NPO staff, and this should be a three, but this talks more about the actual installation of the signal, and so we wouldn't, signals needs to be in before the phase two of the multifamily because it's going to be a lot more traffic, and again, similar to what gets developed in that commercial frontage. And so we did recommend approval that you accept the two listed findings and forward the preliminary plat to the city council with the three conditions recommended by city staff, and thank you.
Do we have an applicant presentation?
Don't have a whole lot to add, but just wanted to make a comment based on the traffic light, we're having ongoing conversations with the neighboring property, obviously, this is going to be developer-driven and I'll be funding it, so I'm optimistic that the neighbor is going to be excited about that proposal, so we're having those conversations and I don't see it being a sticking point, so outside of that, I think everything else we've kind of gone over, but I'm happy to answer any questions if anything's came up.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Now, are there any public comments? If not, we'll go to questions and comments from the commission? I just had to start, Ryan, I had a hard time putting number, item number seven and number eight together.
Item number seven and eight.
Right, seven, so this is the Solomon Landing and the next one's the Emery, aren't those the big apartment building, like where do they sit next to each other?
Okay, sure.
So that I'm thinking about which one I'm supposed to be thinking about at which time?
This is the multifamily portion of development right here.
That'd be on the south end.
And I was going to say, that's actually tilted, it's on the Penn Street side.
If you look at this, this, this shows the red, which is the frontage on Penn Street, that'll be the commercial, that's the C2A, there's a public street that goes behind it, and then the area that's purple would be the RM21.
That's item number eight on our agenda.
Yeah, and that's the preliminary site plan, so the preliminary plat just lays out the general configuration of the lots, where the streets are going to go, and then the subsequent request is just preliminarily approving, you know, the use of property, so.
Great.
This will be the first phase of the multifamily, and then this would be the second phase of it, they're not proposing to do anything over here at this point except pretty some buffering adjacent to the single-family residential, that's another thing I'll say about the code, right, we didn't require before residential with residential, but we are requiring with the new code buffering from multifamily to a single-family, so they'll install that now, this is going to take, would take a while for this overall number of units to develop with that landscape, it would be very nice by the time they get there.
And so for the Solomon Landing preliminary plat, so the what's in green up on the screen right now, full disclosure, I live on the corner of Logan Court and 240th, where, so the proposed road that comes out, it's just the proposed zoning road that's coming out on 240th, is that going to be west of Logan, or, I mean, are you, will it be in a direct extension of Logan, or will Logan just still go to 240th and not extend into this?
It's the latter.
So the, the road that's proposed here, coming off 240th, will be offset?
Yeah, and it lines up with, I can't remember the number of lots, but it lines up with almost like in-between two lots in that subdivision.
That was the one, yes.
And I've talked about this before, but the area in light green, which would be at the northeast corner of the property, they're, they're leaving that zoning as ID, interim development, he just didn't have really any immediate development plans for that time, during the neighborhood meeting, he talked about doing RM21, but we just said, let's, let's kind of hold off on that part until you have a better idea of what you want to do that, and he was, Brandon's been great to work with and agreed to that.
So is there something special about lot 115 down the lower left-hand corner? Should that be incorporated in the recommendations?
Uh, let's.
Because it's just 14, 16, 17, and 18, it skips over 115.
Yeah, and so 15 had, is at the corner of, would be Jones and Penn Street, right, so that already has a signalized intersection, and so we really didn't feel that a development there would necessitate the installation of a traffic signal over on Saratoga, it's really as developed.
People take the shortcut, or take the shorter route.
It really is development, kind of moves over to that west side, and, and when you start constructing many more multifamily units, that, that's really going to be necessary.
Okay, all right.
And it may require it upfront, if it comes in and says, well, we want to put a convenience store over on that west side, they have to put that traffic signal sooner than later, I think, I think Brandon's committed to kind of doing all this development at once, it's just kind of thought from a city standpoint that, you know, sometimes development doesn't go perfectly and, you know, not to get painted in a corner and have to do it with that additional phase when, you know, when, when your, when your ultimate users maybe not pan out.
Yeah, okay.
Definitely need the houses, that's for sure. And we've named the dirt pile Mount Logan, by the way, people on our street, so. Any other questions?
No questions.
All right, I'll entertain a motion then.
Okay, I'll move that the planning commission accept the two listed conditions and forward the preliminary plat, plat to the city council with the recommendation for approval, subject to the conditions recommended by the city staff.
Motion by Miller?
I'll second.
Second by Ahern, could we have a roll call, please? Willer?
Aye.
Staber?
Aye.
Vincent?
Aye.
Ahern?
Aye.
Heisler?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Agenda item number eight, this is the Emery at North Liberty Site Plan.
Okay, so we've already kind of talked about the zoning, again, with the new zoning ordinance, we broke down the site plan into preliminary site plan, and later would be the construction site plan approval, which requires a lot more detail, I would say that breaking this apart allows for them to submit and kind of give a conceptual layout of a much larger development than we would normally see because they don't have to spend, you know, a very large amount of money on the engineering, and so that later part will be reviewed by staff. So this is the, the two phases that I talked about, this would be multifamily development with the accesses, they have the public amenities like the clubhouse and the pool and things like that, areas for their stormwater detention. One thing I'll point out is, another benefit to the code is, there is a lot of surface parking here, that's certainly their right to do, the new code requires, you can't have more than 15 parking spaces in a row before you have to put a landscape island, and this development, I think, highlights that, that's a good thing, also requiring specific amount of trees and buffering along the frontage along a public street, so you're, again, starting to see things, code starting to work here, and I think this is good rendering that, that really shows that. So again, we'll, we'll review, assuming this gets approved, we'll review at a later time, we would expect the first phase of the multifamily to be reviewed and engineered, we'll review that administratively and just ensure that it's consistent with the plan that you approve, assuming that you do so. Again, two listed findings, there was a conflict with the northernmost driveway entrance, let me get back, this, right here, as it, as it comes in and goes towards clubhouse, there's a, I understand it is a storm intake, I think they're kind of working out those details, so what we did recommend in our approval, that this conflict be addressed during the construction site plan approval. Thank you very much.
Okay, do we have an applicant presentation?
Good evening, my name is Brent Haverkamp, I'm from Ames, so I'll be the developer, owner, manager of this multifamily site, we own and operate several sites and complexes like this throughout Iowa, and we're really looking forward to doing work in this community, building an attractive project, and I'd be happy to talk about the project or any questions that you guys might have.
Thank you. And do we have any public comments? All right, we'll go to questions and comments from the commission then.
Someone, the rendering, the gray areas, are those, is that a parking garage for the residents?
These are, these are, these would be parking, just garages, yeah, so you got, it's a combination of surface parking and then there are enclosed garages for people.
So that breaks up the amount of parking visually, so you're not looking across asphalt?
Yeah, cool, yeah, and again, another, you know, on the first renderings that we saw, actually had the garages between the building and the street, another code amendment that, you know, we want the principal building to be what you're looking at, not the garages, so they, they worked it pretty well and were able to reorient the garages into the buildings.
Would you say this is the first development of its kind in North Liberty?
Certainly, yeah, this is certainly one of the biggest that we've had, and yeah, I would say so, this is a big RM21 development, I think it takes the right developer, I think a combination of them, I think, I think it's working out pretty well, I do think with the, with the way land costs are going in the city and construction costs, you know, you're going to start seeing lots getting smaller and, and developments like this in order to make a project work, but you start looking at the benefits of that, right, having higher density and, and, you know, things closer to amenities are the things we want in the planning world, and sometimes when houses are cheaper to build and land costs are cheap, you're spread out, so this is, this is one of the benefits, and, you know, this is a great area for this type of density, you've got proximity to bike trails, you know, Liberty Center Pond, you can easily get down to the community center, so this, this is a great, great spot for this. Tin Roost, don't forget about that. Brewery coming too.
That actually was one of the things I was going to talk about, it kind of feels like it, it's a, on the comprehensive plan topic.
That came up at the last advisory committee meeting to this area, it wasn't shown on the current map, the consultants didn't have it on there, and when I let them know, hey, this is kind of in preliminary approval, what was going in there, that was the exact same conversation that we had, was this almost becomes the center of town, I mean, you know, Liberty Way, Tin Roost, this area, which we haven't, you know, we haven't really had necessarily a, you know, it's all, should be very walkable, accessible.
I heard something really cool last Thursday, is, I'm at a meeting, was, you know, you kind of want to make these, these kind of, these areas of character, right, these different little areas in the city, but the one thing that I really liked is making sure you have connections to these that you can get easily from one place to another, so again, with the new comp plan, I think, I think that's what we're looking for in these areas like, you know, the Cherry Street District, right, we just don't have to have one district, we can create several districts throughout the city, and they kind of, you know, play into that neighborhood character as well.
Well, and to the south down by the, is it the Liberty Pond where we're going to have higher-end condos, that's not what this is, this is multifamily, it's not intentionally higher-end condos, or is this?
This is higher-end condos for sure, yeah, I think, I think Brandon's building over there is certainly higher-end, but this is, this is definitely a higher end, you start to have those amenities that you normally wouldn't see with the regular, you know, multifamily development, so, you know, they've got clubhouses and things for the residents to do, so I think you're going to be very impressed, this is going to be a very high-end development.
My next question is always about our aging population then, and remind me again how we work with builders on if they have accessible, obviously, they have to meet the ADA, but do we encourage aging-in-place facilities that have?
I think, I think we're having that conversation now, I wish we would, you know, I wish we were further along, but we're still continuing to have that conversation, I think as our population ages, I think we're seeing more and more in need of that, but I think, really, I think that conversation's going to continue to advance.
I think the market's going to have a lot to say about that, too.
I did, just because I didn't remember seeing it in the packet, have a question for the applicant on if you would give some samples of other properties, you said you, they manage several in the state of Iowa, do you have some examples in, in the communities they're in?
Yeah, and I, I could, actually, they gave me renderings and I neglected the packet.
There's one in a previous packet.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we, when we discussed this the first time, and I'll say it too, I'm familiar with. I'm familiar with a couple of other Mr. Haverkamp's developments, and I've seen them firsthand. And this is not something, not only will this be unique for North Liberty, but it will really be unique for, I mean, almost the corridor, really. The only other, the only other attempts at something like this that we could maybe refer to are all geared towards students in Iowa City. And this is above, I mean, this is above that. So it's, it's very unique, yeah, for this area.
Cool.
Thank you for saving me on that one.
Oh, there you go.
These are some renderings of what we expect the buildings to look like.
Thank you. Yeah.
We have examples of other projects that we have accessible as well.
I just, when you said you were from Ames, I wondered if I knew of any of your other developments and I just.
So that's where predominantly a lot of the projects.
Nice. Another market that doesn't have very cheap land either.
So what's the ratio of parking spaces per, per number of apartments?
We have about two point two parking spots per apartment, about one point two parking spots per bed for the project. What we found that, that probably exceeds what your code is by a bit, we find that that's a really good ratio for most of our projects. And so on a project like this, it's pretty captive. You know, on a football weekend or something, then there's not a lot of street parking for overflow. So we like to make sure that we have.
And are they apartments or condos?
They're apartments. Yeah, they, they would be what we would call as a, as a class A, so an upper end, pretty highly amenitized, pool, clubhouse, outdoor amenities. You know, we'll have things like, you know, dog wash and, you know, a lot of things. There'll be a pipe, a path around the walking path around the pond for the part that's connected to us. And so, yeah, so it'll be, it'll be, you know, I like to think of it as an institutional quality, institutional scale, a higher end, highly amenitized project.
It's a great concept. I'm also in property management at a smaller scale. I was very impressed with the concept here. Parking's ample and the two point two ratio I'm familiar with. I have a similar thing in the property in North Liberty. When you get to this kind of economy of scale, though, you're, you always have a few parking spaces extra when you play, play the odds and you get this many units and you're going to get a lot more.
Yep.
And it just kind of, there's an ebb and flow.
It'll certainly be built in phases. And so we won't build the whole project at one time, but it'll be built over a few year period.
In my day-to-day management, there's a lot of things I look at when I see developments. And yours checks a lot of boxes. One thing that stuck out, two things that stuck out, one for the positive, one I'm just confused by. I love the central maintenance shop for property this big. That's an absolute must, trying to get something similar on the property I manage. I noticed a single trash enclosure noted on the thing for apartment complexes size. That seemed unusual.
Yeah, about five years ago, we started on our projects to use a central trash compactor. And so a lot of our projects like this side, we, we would have at least one, sometimes two trash areas per building. And they'd always be difficult for us to keep clean and to keep all the gates in, in working order. And then we went to a central trash compactor where you put your trash in and then it does need a time, so it compacts it. And so really, we only have to have those trash trucks come perhaps once every other week or so, because it really compacts the trash. And so we find it to be more efficient and it's a lot easier for us. The hardest thing on our properties is to keep those trash areas clean. And this only gives us one area to keep clean and we can give it a lot more focus. And so we've been pretty successful with a central trash compactor. We like to kind of have it in a, in a place that's really easy for the tenants to get to. And so they'll drop it in, it compacts it, and it saves a lot of time and travel with the garbage trucks.
Now, one more thing I'd like to add is, you know, to the design process in, in here, you'll notice that the walkways between the buildings, there, there's a, there's a very intentional design to the walkways between buildings and to the public streets. There's several of them. So it was important as we went through this review process that, that, that happened, not that there's just one, but there's several throughout the development. So very intentional that someone just doesn't have to walk through the parking lot to get where they, they want to go. They can walk to public, basically private sidewalks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Nope.
All right, I'll entertain a motion then.
The screen kind of went blank, but, but we did, we had two conditions. We had two findings and, and three conditions.
Page eighty-six, it looks like.
This motion has one condition listed.
One condition.
Ryan, is that?
Nope, you're right. One condition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All entertain a motion.
I'll move that the planning commission accept the two listed findings and forward the site plan to the city council with a recommendation for approval with one condition recommended by city staff.
Motion by Ahern?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Miller. Can we have a roll call, please?
Bathke?
Aye.
Heisler?
Aye.
Staber?
Aye.
Vincent?
Aye.
Willer?
Aye.
Ahern?
Aye.
Great. Agenda item number nine, public hearing for zoning code amendment. Ryan, you again.
I just got a half an hour presentation on this one, if no.
Everyone must stay seated. No, we're just, we're good with that, sorry.
This is the one where I.
Food?
Yeah.
This is the one where I kind of mentioned, as you go through a very large amendment, you're going to find some things that need to be tweaked. I'll be back here several more times of tweaks. And so I, I didn't want to spend a lot of time on this unless you had questions, but these are just tweaks that you find and you go through the process and say, you know, oops, missed that one or, or looked at that wrong. But, you know, we'll, we'll continue to keep banging away at this code till I get it right or I retire, whichever comes first. Probably the, probably the latter.
We need to have a plan. Okay. Are there any public comments? If not, questions from the commission?
Nope.
Did he lull us into compliance here?
Saving this one for the end, was this?
Right, brilliant, brilliant. Well, I don't want to belabor it, but if there are no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
We did have one finding and just a recommendation for approval without any conditions.
Ninety-one.
I will move that the planning commission accept listed finding and forward the ordinance amendment to the city council with recommendation for approval.
Great.
I'll second.
Motion by Heisler?
I'll second.
Second by Ahern? Can I have a roll call vote?
Staber?
Aye.
Bathke?
Aye.
Ahern?
Aye.
Heisler?
Aye.
Vincent?
Aye.
Willer?
Aye.
Great. Agenda item ten, approval of previous minutes. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Motion by Staber?
I'll second that.
Second by Miller. Do I need a roll call on this one? Voice vote, voice vote. All in favor of approving the minutes? Signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Is there any old business? Hey, if not, is there any new business? Like, can Ryan make a longer agenda?
It's a big one.
Yes.
To me, but okay. All right, and then no new business? What?
Uh, it'll be. Preserve. Nine, so.
Right, well, if there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn. I'll second.
Motion by Ahern, second by Stabler. All in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed?